Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting the ordinance committee to order. I believe it is shortly after six.
Six oh eight.
Six oh eight. Okay, it's like all of us are here. I did notice that we have minutes to approve, so.
Would you like to make a motion to accept the minutes?
All of those in favor, alright, okay. Now, we do have the, one of the things on our agenda here tonight, since we have a neat public speak, is the food truck ordinance. And what you can see in front of you is a draft, which I think is gonna be a working draft for now. But this is the first time we've actually put pen and paper here. So, what I did was I looked at the mobile vendor ordinance that we have currently on the books, and for this purpose, integrated how a food truck would fit within this ordinance. Now, we could, if we decided to, just take the food truck piece of this out. I felt like it does fit within mobile vendor. So, what you can see is that everything that's new is in italics. So, the start of this is a definition for a food truck. So, a food truck shall mean any motorized vehicle with onboard power, refrigeration, food preparation facilities where food is prepared at an off-site location. And we could say prepared and served, you know, I guess it's just semantics. Do you all have any feedback on that particular piece? For the definition, anything?
With the definition of what?
Of the food truck. Yeah, you're welcome to, please.
The definition of food truck?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. So, I would recommend that rather than use the word food truck, that you use the word mobile food vendor.
Okay.
Because that's what the food code uses, and that's what we used on the health department. And also, then it doesn't limit you, because in the past year, we've had.
Made up your truck, yeah.
Yeah, it might not be a motorized vehicle. What you do with Julie Toolman, who's on her bicycle on the bike path selling popsicles from a refrigerated, you know, little cooler.
So, for that, that would fall under the mobile vendor. So, I hear your, I hear your point.
It could fall under the, we had to figure out what to do with Julie.
Right, so, I think that's something that we can put on here for, you know, as a, something that we can consider here, as far as semantics.
Well, it's important, because the purpose of this is so that you can identify the, the food people and separate them from the balloon people.
Right.
Right, and then have some authority over where they're allowed to operate within the city.
Right.
So, you might have the motorized truck, the food truck, and then you might have the people that aren't the motorized food truck. There could be any number of.
Like a pushcart or, yep.
Yeah, that's right, pushcars. And then, do you mean to, I guess, I'm asking the committee, do you mean to also have, want to have control over that group too? Because if you wanna have control over all of them, call them mobile food vendors.
Sure, and, and I think, yep, I think, I think that's, that's fine. I, I do think that we, I wanna make sure that we have food truck in here, because all the, all the ordinances I've looked at from every other community, they, they do use the word food truck as well.
They're limiting their capacity then.
Right, and I'm, and I'm fine to keep.
You're doing a better job than that.
Right, I'm, I'm fine to keep, I just wanna make sure that there's no ambiguity about this applying to food trucks as well as mobile food.
What if you said, what if you just said, uh, mobile food vendor?
You could define what mobile food vendor is.
Shall mean any motorized vehicle or food truck with onboard power.
Right.
Well.
So, so we have, we do have, the good news is.
What's if they define mobile food vendor as in the food code? Maybe we can just steal their, uh, you know. Maybe you could point to the food code and say, mobile food vendor is defined as, uh, let's just find one. You could point to my code and say, mobile food vendor is any vendor so defined by the, you know, Massachusetts, I could give you the actual, you know, what this is.
Yeah, cuz I mean, we do make reference to the chapter 101, section 3 of the general laws. So, there's no reason why we can't make reference to the food code.
And you'd say, anybody who is defined as a mobile food vendor under the, insert food code name, and licensed by the board of health.
Right.
And/or required to be licensed by the board of health, something like that.
Mm-hmm. And so, now, one of the things that, so, that, everything else is the same. And if you look at, I put in section A1, and we could say, you know, mobile food.
Yeah.
Whatever, are required to be licensed to operate in the city and must fulfill the following requirements. Now, what I decided to do was, you can see, this, actually, B1 is supposed to go under A1. Because this, if you look at B, that was original. And I felt like what I wanted to do, so I don't know if you can, you can see this, but B1's supposed to be under A1. It was just a, an error there. So, food trucks that wish to do business with the city will fire the application with the health, health agent of the East Hampton Board of Health, and will require more detailed inspection before a license is granted. The application shall contain the following. And so, this is where I was trying to figure, this is one of the reasons why we wanted to have you here. Because I, I was thinking that if you're gonna serve food, you would probably want, within their application, a little bit more than name and address, identification of the goods, a detailed description of the goods, their vendor license, their, whatever, the pains of, that they're, you know, pay taxes, and the plan for disposal recycling, which is in there. I, I figured you would want, like, a little bit more information.
Well, remember that I have, I'm operating under this state code.
Right.
It tells me what I have to require improvement.
Okay.
But you could ask for more, if you want.
And I could, but I don't. Well, I, I do under, yeah, I can and I do, but I generally don't ask for what laws or regulations don't require, because I have limited authority to do that. So, I never.
I was thinking of things, I mean, I don't see a contact.
I don't.
I don't see, I don't see contact information.
So.
Well, what I would do is take this all together.
Mobile numbers.
Because you're saying in your regulation that they have to come to me, but they already have to come to me under another law. I mean, why are you repeating this? This isn't really, shouldn't even be in your ordinance.
Well, if we're asking them to do what they're required to do within our ordinance, I thi- I think that that redundancy is okay, because for them to, the clarity of them. So, if they're coming to East Hampton, one of the first places people will look is in the ordinances. So, and they'll say, well, we're covered under the mobile food vendor ordinance.
That's not really what happens. The first place they call is the health department.
Well, that's good.
And then, I'm the one that always has to say to them, go to the fire department, go to the police department, find out where you can park. Go to the city clerk, see if you need a state hawk, you know, if you need to, to, because they, because they do this thing. Go to the police department and get your hawkers and peddlers license. See, right now, we're talking about three different requirements to sell a hot dog in East Hampton.
Right.
And I would like to make it simpler.
Right.
More.
Well, and I don't think this is necessarily adding anything, other than just clarifying the process.
Well, that's a good question, because this wasn't being enforced.
Right, which is why, which is why we wanna clarify the process.
So, if you're going to create this new ordinance, then you are gonna enforce it. So, they are gonna need three permits. If you're gonna charge money for this, then they're gonna, and they're gonna have to go through each other's processes.
That's actually not true, we're gonna have you.
No, you're not gonna have me. I'm not going to issue your permit.
So, what, what we would hope to do is have it streamlined, so you can issue the license.
Let me make it clear, I'm not gonna issue your permit.
Okay, I don't think it's our permit.
But, but it's not.
I think it's the city's permit.
But, then the city has to issue it. I went through this with the whole common victualer permit. I'm, I'm the health department, and I enforce and issue permits under health codes.
Okay.
And environmental codes, that the state gives me authority to do. I'm not gonna issue everybody else's permits.
Okay.
So, this is something.
So, if we create health regulations in the city of East Hampton, you won't enforce those?
You don't create, you don't have the authority under law to create health regulations.
I, I feel like, I mean, I don't know if that's necessarily.
Well, it is.
I mean, usually with state law, you're, you are bound by state law, but if you wanna be more restrictive or add, you know, generally, the, within the purview of the city, the city has the purview to add restrictions that go above and beyond what the state already requires.
Okay, but.
Tend to agree with that.
Okay.
That's been my understanding over a couple of years.
Then, if you're gonna create health regulations, you will enforce them. I can't real, I cannot enforce your regulations. I can't enforce any more regulations than that.
That's, I'm, and I'm not necessarily, I don't think that, that's necessarily the point, so maybe we should just move on.
Can, can we go back, way back to the beginning?
Okay.
What is the point?
The point is to, as we move forward, with the city having more food trucks coming in, having some common sense regulations that are gonna allow, A, a food truck who wants to come here, have a clear idea of what we expect, and hopefully, to have a process that's relatively simple, for them to get everything done that they need to get done, while protecting the interests of the city. So, for example.
So.
So, making sure, you know, and, and as we move forward, you'll see kind of what I'm, you know, where we're going with this. But, you know, looking at where they can park and for how long. You know, when they're parking somewhere, are they creating a hazard, you know, for pedestrians or other vehicles? That type of thing. Making sure that they are giving the city the adequate information that they need to be giving, to make sure they're doing their due diligence and whatever, you know. Like, for example, making sure that they, that you, you have all the information that you need.
But I already do that, I know that. I, I already do that.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that would be redundant.
Okay.
And I'm, I've always been of the ilk to make a regulation the least worry as possible, and as short as possible, and to be succinct, so that it's easy to understand, read, and enforce.
Okay.
So, that's why I'm asking you exactly what is it that we're, that you're trying to accomplish in this particular ordinance.
Well, really, we wanna fix this mobile vendor ordinance and make it include food trucks. Or, you know, mobile vendor. Because right now, if, if someone wants to be a mobile vendor food or not, the law of East Hampton is they have to, they are required to give these things.
Right.
As of now.
Right.
And, you know, we, I feel like it would make sense for them to have to, maybe if they're selling food in East Hampton, to be, to, you know, give a little bit more information, which maybe you require. And I don't know if that is, you know, gets written down somewhere, or if there's a form that they fill out or whatnot. But, you know, I, I, I'm not try, I don't wanna restrict food trucks. I want to just make sure that if ten more come into town.
Right.
They're not gonna overwhelm us.
Okay, and this hasn't been like an inquisition, but I just needed to clarify for myself, what is it you wanna accomplish as a, you know. And I think that's insightful, cuz if ten more food vendor, mobile food vendors came to my door, I would permit them all.
Right.
And then, what do we do with five hot dog vendors who wanna park at the promenade? Do they, can they, will they? So far, and when I, I saw that coming earlier this year, and especially because people said, oh, promenade, we wanna, we wanna sell hot dogs. How do we sell hot dogs out there? And I said, you know, that's a good question, I don't know. Go ask the police if you can even park there, but, you know, if you do A, B, C, and D, and E here, I will permit you. If you, you know, pass the inspection, and you have the credentials and all that. But I saw that coming. I said, what are we gonna do if there's fights out on the promenade, you know?
Yeah, between vendors.
Move, I was here first.
Right.
Can you just see it? I mean, this does happen in the larger cities.
Right.
Around some of the events and special places. So, I think it's insightful.
Do they issue a certain number of licenses?
Well, that, that's what, that's one of the notes I had, was do we wanna have a limit to the number of licenses that we issue? Which is another reason why I feel like it's important for us to look at this, you know. And not that we're gonna have an influx of ten more, but, you know.
You're good.
You never know.
Why people actually didn't try to park around the promenade and sell hot dogs is the question.
Yeah.
Why they didn't do it?
I'm, I'm not, I mean, I know that, you know, the last time we revised, I think it was in two thousand and five, and one of the reasons why we revised it was because of the guy that was standing out at Whiskers and Brass Cat selling hot dogs. We needed, we needed to bring him, like, he, you know, there was, at that time, it, it didn't cover him, you know, so.
Well, he didn't have a motorized vehicle, he has just a car.
Right, but he was covered under the mobile vendor, which is why, so this ordinance, mobile vendor, covers hot dog carts.
Because he's on the city sidewalk? Is, is that part of the sidewalk his property, or is it the property?
No, that was city property, sidewalk is city property.
Well, half of the sidewalk, I know I became aware that on Main Street, half of the sidewalk, the, the half that say, still to the side, you know, to the building. Half of that is their property, and the other half is the city property. I didn't know if that was true on every city street, or just on Main Street.
Every street is different.
It depends, it's usually like a distance from the center line of the street.
Right, and those are all measured in. The city engineer presumably has those records for every street.
Interesting.
So, one of the things that is on our list to talk about is a limit of licenses.
What about having some sort of map, or like, with a fill-in, where the person says this is the location I would wanna be? Would that be difficult for you to, as they're coming through, just having that sheet say, okay, there's already a truck at this location?
I, I cannot possibly do that.
It's a great idea.
And neither can you, it's not a question of his, it's my'll do or he'll do. Because they, they move. You know, they set up here and they decide, oh, I'm, I'm not selling much business here, I wanna move there.
Okay.
It might be something as generic as saying, mobile vendors may not impede traffic, affect pedestrian crossways, cause a nuisance, cause a disturbance, you know, generic things like that.
Yeah.
And then, if there are problems, we can say, oh, you're, you're, you're affecting the public walkway, or you're on the halfway on the sidewalk. And we actually did have that happen once, with that haunted house the first year. They arranged for this food truck to come and sell food. Because, listen to my common sense, when I told them they were gonna wanna sell food, no, 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 they're not. So, a week before they opened the haunted house, they finally said, you know, we are gonna wanna have food, let's get a food truck. And they got this guy from, I don't know where, and he calls me up and he says, I'm gonna set up outside of the haunted house. I said, you are? Says, who? And we worked it out, and we permitted him, and then I went to inspect him the night that that haunted house opened. And he's got this big mondo circus trailer thing that was halfway. And the guy that owns the button building was all upset with him. And the fire and police showed up, and they didn't like the way he was, so, that's where we would say, no, that doesn't work here.
Yeah, exactly.
You can't do this again.
So, actually, within, within the ordinance, the way it existed, I mean, we do have, you know, a, a, no mobile vendor operating on a sidewalk shall impede or impair pedestrian traffic, no mobile vendor shall conduct business in a public way unless there is, has been a closed by order of the police for a special event.
Mm-hmm.
No mobile vendor shall commence or, or conduct business in any city improperly unless the use has been previously authorized by, in writing by the mayor. Now, this is where I put in a piece for, for food trucks or mobile, mobile food vendor. So, and, and this, and so this is kind of an addendum to that, because it says you can't do any business in the public way. But a parking space is kind of within the public way. So, that's why I put this addendum in, which is, the, you know, the parking space must be at least two hundred feet from an existing food service establishment. So, it can't be closer than two hundred feet to a brick and mortar. Parking in the space is not obstruct traffic or cause dangerous blind spot for drivers or pedestrians. Parking in the spot for more than five hours without permission from the mayor's office or as part of a special event that has prior city approval. Parking in no parking zone, sidewalks, in front of fire hydrants, or parking in a manner that is hazarded, that is a hazard, is prohibited. Parking in the mill district is permitted, however, if the mill owner does not agree to having a food truck in their building lot, the building owner can request that the food truck be parked in a certain spot at certain times, their request shall be copied to the mayor and health agent.
So, and I think scratch and health agent, cuz again, I don't have the authority.
You wouldn't need to, well, I granted you authority.
And I don't.
You don't want it.
I don't care where food vendors park. I care if they're washing their hands and using gloves, and if their food is fresh and all this stuff, but.
Right. Cuz you were already, I don't know if you knew this, but you were already an authorized agent to enforce this ordinance.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, and I.
Where was that?
Well, it's in section five.
Oh, yeah.
Point.
That was in there all the time?
Yep.
Five point four two?
That was in there the whole time. So, the mayor, city clerk, health inspector, and chief of police may revoke the license issued under the provisions, section point five through eight. Now, I added section five point one point five, or, I'm sorry, five dash four point, four one point five. So, all East Hampton police officers, the mayor, the city clerk, and, and, or the health inspector shall be authorized to enforce this ordinance within the city of East Hampton. So, I just.
Okay.
I, I just increased that, you know, basically said, this is the, these are the enforcement agents.
I think that that's okay.
That's what I figured, I figured.
That doesn't depend on you solely to issue the permit under this ordinance, or to.
No, but it does, you know.
Release them under this ordinance, which just gives me authority if I'm there and I see something wrong, and I can stop it also, just like everyone else.
Yep.
That's very reasonable.
Okay. And so, couple of the other things that I wanted to, alright, so, and now, here's the thing. You know, I think that what, what I wanna do is I wanna make this mobile vendor ordinance, get it to a place where it includes food, which it already did, but explicitly. And where it is to the point where we can actually license them through the city, which we have not been doing. And I think part of that is the cost. Two hundred dollars a year is pretty expensive, I would think, for someone who's coming to sell.
Well, remember, they have to buy a hawkers and peddlers license as well, even if they're selling, whether they're selling food or balloons, or anything like that.
Ones from the state.
Ones from the, that's the hawkers and peddlers, it's the state, and they get that at the police.
Yeah, and the, they can get that.
Apply to the police and they get it from the state.
Right, they can apply through any police department in the state, and what, unlike these other permits, once it's issued to them, they have a hawkers and permits license, it's, it's.
That's for.
Effective in the whole state.
Right, right, right.
That doesn't mean that when they go to Chicopee, they still don't have to get a permit from the Chicopee Health Department.
Right.
Or maybe the other parts of the city, if they have one of these ordinances as well.
So, I'm thinking, one of the things that I'm looking at here is taking this two hundred dollar fee and, and putting it to a one hundred dollar fee. So, it would be ten dollars per day, so if someone wanted to come in for a special event, and they wanted to just do that one special event, and just get licensed for that, it would cost them ten bucks, which I think is reasonable. You know, since this is, because I think what, this is after they see you, or maybe before they see you. Maybe part of your process is like, I'm not gonna sign off on your health certificate until you have the city license. Or maybe the city license says, I'm not gonna sign off on this until you have your health inspection.
What I would do is this, I would, I would continue to do what I've been doing, which is to say to people, you know, I have a chart on my wall, and I brought a copy of it, so, because depending on what kind of food establishment you are, there are different requirements. Sometimes I have to actually look at this to remind myself what to tell people.
Okay.
Then it gets complex. So, I, I would continue to say, you also need a hawkers and peddlers license, do you have that? I don't have to say that, but I do it, cuz it helps people. I don't want a vendor to go out there and then get stopped by the police cuz he didn't know when he was supposed to have this other thing. And this will be similar, you know. I started off by saying, and, you have to go upstairs and see the clerk about another kind of permit.
Right, the city, the city license.
But it was a while before I even knew this existed, so I don't know how, I was here a year or more or two, before I found out about this. And then, when I called Barbara, she said, well.
Right.
I don't know if we issue them, or if we don't issue them, cuz you already issued something, and then they had to get this other thing. And that's when Barbara and I said, she said that you were all looking into it. I said, well, let's just not have you issue those also, until that this is figured out, and so we stopped. But I would continue to say, now you need to go upstairs, have you seen the clerk yet? Did you get that thing, cuz you also need that thing. But I wouldn't not issue my health permit because of that, because the regulation, the, the food code, I can't not issue a permit if they meet all the requirements of the food code, that's the thing.
Right.
The state, the state says who I give the permit to, and what the conditions are. And one of those conditions isn't other local regulations that may apply.
Right, right, right.
If it said that in the food code, then I'd say, sure, okay, I'll make sure that they have your permit. But urge them, make sure they have it, you know, urge, tell them how to go about getting it, even write a little scenario for them, here's the three things you need, no problem. I'd do that for everybody.
I'm still trying to struggle with the, the purpose and the extra fee and the extra step in the process.
Well, I mean, really, so, all the food trucks that have been in East Hampton, that have not gotten, have not paid this fee, have been in violation of the ordinance.
Of the existing law.
Exactly. That's the issue here, we're trying to clear it up.
We're just haven't pursued it.
We haven't, we haven't enforced it, we haven't pursued it. Yeah, so, now, if we wanna.
And what happened was, I think it started when, maybe the first mobile vendor I permitted came back to me and said, I gotta get, get a third permit, and it costs two hundred dollars. And I said, well, what are you talking about? And that's when I called Barbara and said, what are they talking about?
Yeah.
And, and, so, now, here's a way to discourage mobile vendors, if you don't want them in the city, like North Hampton does. They make it impossible. But that guy wasn't gonna pay two hundred dollars to Barbara, then seventy-five dollars to me, then the two hundred or a hundred dollars, or whatever it is for the hawkers and peddlers permit, to come sell a hot dog. And he just said, forget it. And I wish I remember who that was, I don't remember. I think maybe one or two of them in the early years I was here may have actually paid that to Barbara. And after that, she and I said, let's stop this.
Now, I wonder, so you said.
Until we get this sorted out.
Your fee is seventy-five dollars for the inspection?
Wait a minute. It's fifty.
Fifty dollars.
The mobile vendor permit is fifty.
Fifty. I mean.
And that's for the permit.
I wonder, I mean, like, so, here's the thing. We've had this at two hundred. We haven't had any, we haven't had anybody get this license, I think because it's so expensive, which just meant people were going without the license. Like, I mean, I'm, I'm almost wanting to think, like, let's bring our fee down to fifty dollars, to the same fee that, so it would cost them a hundred dollars to be, to do business for a year. Is your, how long is yours?
And a hundred is what they all expect, or that's, that's not.
That's pretty reasonable.
That's very fair.
Um, so, I'm.
It's annually, now, if they don't, if they come today and wanna permit for the year, it's still fifty dollars, and it's only go to December thirty first. January to December.
Ten dollars a day with a limit of a hundred dollars per year?
I mean, we could, it just, the only prob, I mean, that's a good idea. The only problem with that, that is if, you know, say they're gonna do five days.
Can I suggest something?
Yeah.
Make it simple for yourself. Don't do a di, a ten dollar a day thing, cuz I can see what's coming with that, cuz I've had through it. Do the ten dollar a day thing, the thing is going pretty well, now they wanna stay a third day, and they apply again, you gotta revise the permit, you're taking in another check, it's more stuff. Correct, ten dollars?
Just make them pay the fifty bucks.
Fifty is cheap enough.
Yeah.
Just delete the, you know, if you wanna be here for a day, it's fifty bucks. And they're gonna decide whether that fifty dollars is gonna be worth it.
Right.
What if you said something like a hun, fifty dollars for a day permit, a hundred and fifty dollars for the year?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, the only thing.
Look at that and go, geez, all right, maybe I could come back three times, four or five times, and.
I'm just not sure if this.
Better off, and that would make the fee reasonable if they wanted to.
But it'd be the same thing if you charged them just fifty for the year.
But it's fifty, no.
And if they only come once.
It's fifty for the day, or a hundred and fifty for the year.
I mean, I don't know, I.
As opposed to a hundred for the year.
Well, look at it this way, look at it this way.
Or two hundred.
A, a day permit is gonna be for an event. Now, there are some events like cultural chaos.
Cultural chaos.
That is, are gonna be all-day events.
Events in the park.
But most of them are gonna be two hours, three hours, four hours long. They're not gonna really be a full. So, at ten bucks, if you were gonna do a day thing, ten bucks or twenty bucks, that's reasonable. Fifty dollars, that's expensive.
But that was the purpose of the day permit anyway.
But I'm saying get rid of the day permit. Charge everybody fifty bucks, if there's a day thing, and they only wanna come for a day, it's still fifty bucks.
Yeah, not.
And they get the permit for the rest of the year as well. So, if they wanna come back, you don't have to do all this paperwork again.
I mean, my only, my only thought with this, with the fee, is that where it's at now has been prohibitive to the enforcement of it. Because no, collecting that fee is, hasn't been done, because I think it's, I think it might be too hot. You know, I mean, it's, think, well, think about if you, you know, if you're gonna, a food truck, you know, if they're really busy for the whole night, I'm thinking they're probably making, you know, five or six hundred dollars, a guesstimate, I don't know.
No, I never ask.
Yeah.
I always wonder.
Yeah, I mean.
I know this, they're doing pretty well.
Yeah, they're probably doing pretty okay.
Not a good night, they do real well.
Yeah, you know, for.
Because they say that.
Yeah, you know, who knows? But if you think, I mean, who knows? I guess it would, I guess it's conjecture at this point, but I don't know if the point of this is to, you know, try to raise more revenue for the city. I think two hundred, between fifty and two hundred, like, in the city's budget, that's a drop in the hat.
Well, you know what, I, I think this was probably created mostly because of the fireworks.
Yeah.
When do we ever have mobile vendors? So, this is basically something, somebody wrote this for the fireworks, and they know at the fireworks, that these hawkers and peddlers are making a lot of money.
Right.
And maybe that's what the two hundred dollars was about.
Yeah, I mean, this was. Yeah, I mean, this was.
Dennis Corson probably know this.
Yeah, I mean, well, I was here when, I know, I was here when we revised it, uh, but like, the, the genesis of it was the, the fireworks, I mean, because you can see, if you look at, um, you know, one of the E, section E on the, uh, the third page, it's, during the annual fireworks festival, sale of aerosol-powered novelties, such as so-called silly string poppers and similarly novelty products are expressly prohibited as a nuisance.
And you might wanna keep that.
Oh, yeah, I think that's fine to keep.
I would just say, take out the during the annual fireworks festival, and just start that paragraph with the sale of aerosol-powerful laws such as so-called during, you know, leave all the rest of it in, except for during the annual fireworks festival.
Yeah. Right, um, now, one of the other things, so, and we, we can come back to the fee, and that's not, I don't think that's like.
Okay, work on that.
But I, I think, one of the thing, um, things that I think we should look at, first of all, is if we, so what I was thinking was that, you know, the health agent would be, if they, I, I was, you know, I, I guess it's fine for the city clerk to issue this, um, but that means we're gonna want different information, I think the city's gonna want maybe different information than you're gonna ask for.
You'll create an application for it, ask them whatever it is you wanna know.
Right, so, because I think. And I, and I think that, so since this is listed on here, um, you know, what, name and address of the applicant, obviously, uh, uh, phone, uh, email, that, you know, all those contact information.
Right.
Uh, an emergency contact, uh, proof of insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Right, do you guys think of any other one?
Um, does this ordinance require them to have insurance?
Well, I would imagine if it's a roadworthy vehicle that they would be compelled to have insurance.
Well, then you don't really need proof of it, or either that, or you should probably put it in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Usually when you're asking for anything, it's written into the ordinance or the regulation, or something like that, so, maybe, you know, it should say, uh, all motorized vehicles must have proper insurance in accordance with mass regulations, blah, 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 something like that.
Yep. And imagine, you know, I mean, imagine that a food truck might have to carry a little bit extra liability insurance um, beyond their normal car insurance, I would think, I mean, you would think.
I don't know, any question.
If they have, they have propane tanks, and they have generators, and they have, uh, and they're serving food, you know, if, I, I'm, I, I'll look into that a little bit more, that's one of the things I'd like to look into.
The food code doesn't require, the food code doesn't address liability insurance, except that restaurants that have more than twenty-five seats are required to have an individual on duty at all times that's trained in choke-saver, which is behind what maneuver.
Yep.
And then the restaurant is also required to have insurance for that employee.
Okay.
So that nobody, and, and if I try to save Jim from choking in a restaurant, and I'm the waitress, uh, and I do it wrong, I'm a good Samaritan, under the Good Samaritan law in Massachusetts, and you can't sue me and take my house.
Right.
Because I'm a good Samaritan, I tried.
Yeah.
Um, but, my employer is also required to cover me under his liability policy, cover employees that attempt to do this under their liability policy, just to cover me against the legal bills, because you're gonna sue me anyway. And until they say, too bad I was a good Samaritan, I'm still gonna have legal costs.
And you're gonna defend yourself, right.
So, that's the only time in the food code that they refer to insurance, because they're not interested in your insurance.
Okay. I think this is your comment.
It is.
Because I was looking at this, I'm like, did I write that? Where in the city, the food truck hopes to be parked, we should develop a city map with spaces highlighted and numbered.
That's a very good answer.
Yeah, and, and you know, maybe that's one of the things that, um, that's on the application, where, where do you expect to be, um, because that way there's an idea, so that, I think that we could.
Yeah, I would say, where do you wanna set up, that should be a question.
Yeah.
But the question is, when?
Does, does the, does.
This term will, when, I, I buy the hundred and fifty or the two hundred dollar license for the year, and I say, geez, I'd like to set up on Cottage Street.
Yeah.
But next week, I'm thinking, I'm, why don't I just say, I might wanna be over on Union Street, I might wanna be over some, help.
Yeah.
Or at the Mel.
And what do you do with the good human man, who just travels up and down all the streets?
And so how do you? Or the person who then writes, okay, I'm gonna ride top every street that.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it.
Now, we're thinking of commercial streets being restricted to commercial streets where there's commercial business to occur.
So, here's the thing. I think with our other regulations.
So that they wouldn't be in residential neighborhoods, but.
Right.
Uh.
Yeah, I mean, like.
So now, now we're thinking, okay, so, then somebody's gonna say, well, everywhere, but then how does that control when and who and how and how many, I don't think it does.
Well, the real question is though, do we have to control when and who and how many?
Well, if you have ten of them at once, and they all wanna be on Cottage Street by the pond, when, when we, when we put boats on the pond,
Yeah.
there should be some sort of way to designate or.
That's true, because you don't want, if there's ten parking spaces, you don't want food vendors to take them all up.
Right, so, so I think that, that's easy, so, here's the thing, I think, I think that's actually, believe it or not, it's
That's a common.
with the complexity of that, it's not that ea, it's not that hard to solve.
Oh, okay.
Great, let's solve it.
So, okay, so, because, um, when to set up, I think, so we already have under, um, C-one, some restrictions, we have a time restriction. Now, I think what we could add to that is we could add a duration restriction, so, for example, you could say, because the time restriction is a parking spot, can't be in the parking spot for more than five hours without explicit permission.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's one thing, now, we could say, we could add to that, you cannot be in a parking spot for consecutive days, uh, you know, we can determine for a certain amount of consecutive days without specific permission from, so like, let's say they wanna do, maybe let's say three consecutive days. So, let's say they wanna set up Friday, Saturday, Sunday for the, you know, the nighttime crowd or whatever, they could do that as long as they weren't there for more than five hours, and then, but then they would have to leave, and then they could come back the next week instead of Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I mean, that's one way to control that, and I think the other way is to say that they have to be in a pa, a, a parking space, an established parking space, they can't just pull on the side of the road, because that would be mayhem.
That would be the simplest, and I'm always looking for simplest, because, and because I've written so many regulations in my life, I see in advance all the flaws. I, 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 I can game it, I game it as I'm writing it, and I'm saying, well, how, how are they gonna game this, how are they gonna twist that, how are they gonna, what's, is this gonna blow up in my fa, face the way I wrote it, shall instead of must, uh, those two words, you must do this, you shall do this, you will do this, all have different meanings, and so, I, I, um, I guess that's why I sound like, um, I'm not agreeing with anything, but it's just that I'm mostly, I look at this kinda stuff as a devil's advocate, that's how I read these kinds of things.
So, but I think that if we added those, those caveats, I think it would probably address some of that.
Why don't you just say that they have to get permission from the police if they're not in an established parking space?
Yeah, and then we could add that as like a.
Makes it simple, as simple as that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my, 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 uh, thought is that they must, they should be in a parking space, you know, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan.
Because then they could, I mean, if they wanted to park here, they could, they could just pull into one of these parking spaces and they're across from the, the pond.
Yeah, we could say, in the municipal building parking lot.
Yeah.
You're two hundred feet away already from.
Yeah, you're two hundred feet away from any.
No issues there.
What about in, um, real site, where, if you're coming for ass in there?
But you may not, that might not be the best spot for.
Well, that's, that's.
Perceived as.
That's a special event, so.
I wish we had any mobile vendor here to talk with me.
Yeah. I know, I don't know where they are.
He would tell you, she would tell you stuff that I.
They're probably out telling.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, well, they're, no, it's Wednesday, they're usually, uh, I told, I mean, we did, we did invite them, um, because Matt invited all the, because he's doing food truck Friday.
Right.
This week, I think, or next week.
What's food truck Friday?
November fourth, it's, uh.
Oh, at the brewery, one of the breweries, yeah.
At the brewery, yep. Um.
That's where the mobile vendors have all gone.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a couple of them did actually try to set up on city streets here.
They're not getting their business.
And I didn't see them come back, except that they go to the breweries.
I mean, I think really. I would say the only, like, really, the big, the, the only place outside of the mill parking lots that we're gonna see food trucks is probably right here, right, right in this alley.
Yeah, and why haven't they?
That's a good question, maybe they are under the impression that they're not allowed to, you know?
Nobody's asked me.
I don't know, maybe they feel like there's not enough foot traffic, but, um.
The other thing is, um, you gotta, don't take for granted the food trucks, if you try to get a food truck for an event, you better book them four or five hours in advance, they're busy.
Oh, yeah. They're busy, yeah.
They're straight out, I mean, they're just doing really well.
Yeah.
And they know where to go to get the food, and, and they're not gonna park around here and sell five hot dogs if they can go somewhere and sell fifty-five hot dogs, so.
Yeah, well, the breweries are, are big business for them right now.
We're not at the fifty-five hot dog level yet, that's my guess.
Yeah. They're, they're doing pretty well over there.
But again, this is something for the future, this is, we're, we're tweaking this now, or you're tweaking this now, because you see what could be going on later.
Right.
As the ci, and the city's constantly growing and becoming more interesting, and more people are coming, and more businesses coming, and it's, you know, it's gonna reach a tipping point where we'll be glad that this was in place.
Yeah, so, um, so I'm gonna say, I'm gonna add to here, must be in a parking space, I'm gonna write, um, you know, a consec, consecutive days clause, so we can't, because, I mean, really, as of right now, if a food vendor wanted to go set up and park in front of the pond, they could do that, and they could park there for any, any legal amount of time that the parking space allows, and probably even more, because, you know, police have other things to do.
And what about the push cart, so, so, do I understand that you, you stopped whispers from selling hot dogs?
Yeah. Nope, nope, we didn't stop them.
You didn't, um.
No, we just, we just revised the ordinance so it included, uh, mobile food vendors.
Oh, so.
Um, because at the time, it didn't in, include mobile food vendors, it was just for the fireworks, that was in two thousand and five.
So. So the two things are push carts, the two things that have caught this year is the push cart hot dog thing, and the second is Julie Toolman,
On the bike.
Who sells on the bike in the door in the popsicle, it turns out that first we said to her, well, you're a mobile food vendor, because she was gonna ride up and down the bike path.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, what else to call her, we didn't know what kind of food establishment she was, then after that, we said,
Right. Right.
no, no, you're a temporary food vendor, because, we changed it three times.
Wow.
Finally.
What'd you settle on?
Well, we settled on, the Department of Public Health called me and said, Jackie, she's a frozen dessert manufacturer, I said, oh, she is.
And that, and frozen dessert manufacturers are allowed to ride their bikes down the bike path and sell.
Well, a frozen dessert manufacturer doesn't need an additional permit to sell her ice cream.
Oh, you don't need a permit to sell it?
No, she doesn't need any, she doesn't need a mobile vendor permit, she doesn't need a temporary food vendor permit, so, we said to Julie, wrap up those two permits we gave you, we're not charging you anymore money, we're making you a mo, you are a frozen dessert manufacturer.
That's too funny.
And, of course, I'm familiar with that whole set of regulations called frozen dessert manufacturing regulations, but they usually apply only to people who are extruding ice cream out of a soft serve machine.
Right.
The Tasty Top is a frozen dessert manufacturer, McDonald's and Burger King are the, are frozen, and the extra requirement for them is that they have their milk tested every month, samples go to a lab, and we test them for bacteria contact.
Oh, interesting. How about Maltoms, or they're hard scoop, so they don't.
They're hard scoop, so they don't have to follow that, you know, although
Frozen dessert manufacturer.
he is technically a frozen dessert manufacturer also, but the ones that I'd been most, uh, familiar with were the extruded ice cream.
Right.
And, uh, and the milk test.
I did see, I did see a mobile cupcake vendor, so.
In East Hampton?
Uh, I can't remember if it was in East Hampton or not.
Was it at the, uh, Farmer's Market?
No, it might have been somewhere else, but that's coming down the line.
Yeah, well, cupcakes are the, the, you know.
Yeah, they're in.
They're the new brownie.
Yeah, so, mobile cupcake vendor.
It still tastes like cupcakes though, it's not special though.
Yeah. Yeah, no, um, so, okay, let me, let me just see if there's anything else on here that, um, what do you guys think about that, the mill wording that I put in there, I didn't really, like, I wanna give the mill owners a little bit of control, but I don't.
Oh, I was gonna ask you about that.
I don't wanna give them total control, necessarily.
Well, um. What if, what if the mill thinks, when I read that, I said, what?
Figured it would be a control.
Well, they're parking, no?
No.
Where's the mill, oh, that's E, so let me ask you, whose property am I parked on if I'm, uh, an ice cream truck?
Because of its class.
Yeah. That's a good question, isn't it?
In the mill district, am I on city property or am I in mill property?
You're in the ether zone, you're in neither, you're.
Well, do you have, does the city have a law?
Probably mill, probably a, a deed to mill prop, my guess, a deed to mill property, however, a.
Easement.
An easement granted by, to the city.
Yes.
For the purpose of developing the parking lot and the people to use the parking lot.
Oh, is that why the public can use that even though it's private property?
Yes.
I pu, I puzzled over that myself a little.
It's a little millions of dollars.
They, they have.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Mill owners have a lease to it.
They spend money to break their property, so therefore they're gonna give it back, got it?
To develop their, their, their property, right.
So, so I wanted to give, and I, I'm, I, this was just something that, you know, we, we've kinda gone back and forth on this, but I figured, and, and this is by no means, this is a rough draft of this thought, but, the thought is, if a mill owner has a problem with a food truck parking on, in front of their mill, um, then they can request that, and, and, uh, that that food truck be parked at a certain spot at certain times, you know, um, and that would be copied to the city clerk.
Right, that, that, that would scare, that, that would scare me, I, I, I don't know if that would be enforceable or pass, I.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know.
A lit, a litmus test.
So, we need to figure this out, because this is the one area that we.
I think we could say that trucks can park he, we could say trucks could park here.
I think it's the mill owner's property, and it, they have the sole control over whether they can, they'll have a food truck on their property, just like, I, I can have one in my driveway for a party or not.
Yeah, I don't know though, because it's a park, it's public parking, those spaces are public parking spaces.
I don't know, because, yeah.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
So, the mill owners don't have any authority over who uses those parking spaces?
They, so they. So, I think, so I haven't seen a final version.
They can't go out and say, get out of that parking space?
I haven't seen a final version of the easement, because I don't think it's been filed yet, I think that they have control over some of the spaces, and then they don't have control over others, and we don't know which ones those are yet.
Why don't you just delete that whole thing and just wait and see if there's a problem?
Yeah, there's.
Because that kinda confuses it, that's just a recommendation, I mean, I'm not on your committee or anything, I'm not ch, trying to tell you what to do, but, that's kind of a red flag.
Yeah. I just don't know what else.
It just makes people think about something, why even think about it if it's not a problem?
Uh, one of the mill owners has already brought it up.
Oh, okay, then it is a problem, that's gonna be.
That's why we're talking about it.
Okay, now I, now I get it, you're getting a sign.
So, here's the, I mean, here's the, ah, no, I don't, I don't even know how to approach this one, I just know that that's where they are all going, and, ah, necessarily, no, I mean, if, do they need to get permission from the mill owners?
What about parking in the mill district may be permitted with owner with, that, I don't know how to say.
So, so here's, 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 here's the crux, so you have a tenant in the mill who's having the food truck come.
Like a residential tenant?
No, like, the brewery.
Like the brewery, you want the food truck.
Well, they're doing it, they're doing that around.
Right, but the mill owner says, I don't necessarily like the way the food truck looks, it, it looks kinda shabby maybe.
Oh, really?
So, this is bringing our.
Oh, so that'd be Mike Nishon that must be saying that, because only Mike would say that.
Prestige down. Maybe. Maybe.
Well, because he has a really high-end place.
Yes, he does.
And I think that that would only be Mike that would say that.
Yeah, so, um.
So which food truck looks shabby?
I, I mean, it's, like, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I mean, because then, and I'm not even gonna get into the.
Food, food trucks in and of themselves are shabby.
Kind of.
How pretty they look. I, they're awful.
But then.
I love to live in the, from the planet, egg food trucks.
But then, at the end of the day, it's kinda like.
That just slipped out.
The one that was parked at the brass cap, I thought.
Mothership Gourmet?
Cute as, as a buck.
Mu- Mothership Gourmet.
Do you know who that chef is? He's a professional chef. Do you know who he's chefed for most recently?
No.
Bill Cosby.
Oh, really?
He was his personal chef.
Really?
Wow. Um, I guess that's why he's on a food truck.
He left, he left Cosby's employ and decided to go out on his own, and he wanted to do a food truck.
Um, yeah, he's doing a pretty good job. I mean, he seems to be pretty busy.
Yeah, is he? Is he?
Oh, yeah.
Is he down there at the, the brewery?
Almost every weekend.
Oh, good, I'm glad that he's doing all right. Well, I knew he would, cause people would appreciate his food.
Would, would, would the number of feet away from the, from the building, satisfy the mill owner who.
And I haven't heard any.
Saying, if you're saying, you know, you have to be, what, you have to be two hundred feet from any building?
No, no, no.
From any restaurant?
Restaurant.
You said restaurant. What if, should there be a building?
I don't, see, I don't know, that might be, that, that's gonna get tough.
Fire for the building.
So here's the thing.
You're, you're being symbiotic with the brewery. They'd wanna be right outside.
They're right outside the brewery.
Shouldn't it be two hundred feet from any food establishment?
Well, or building.
Well, it is, that's what it is right now, is any, any food.
Inside Mill one eighty.
I don't know.
The community food engine is a food establishment.
Right.
Did you go to their opening?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know if frankly, you can actually say.
Isn't that impressive?
What if you?
That's pretty cool.
From a food establishment. I don't know if that should be, if that would pass muster.
I've seen it, I've seen it in, uh, almost like, so almost all the, almost all of the, um, larger city food ordinances that I've read.
It makes sense to me.
All right.
As public policy.
Yeah.
Is it too restrictive on business?
So, can I give you a corollary to that? In public health, a lot of times, the little boards of health in these small towns, these hill towns, they don't like this or they don't like that, so they say, well, we're the board of health, we can do anything, we can make any kind of law, so we're gonna make a law that prohibits this. Usually, they're talking about setbacks or provisions around septic systems or wells. And they're trying to limit development, as an example, or they're trying to, they're trying to do things that boards of health weren't really put in place to do, this is that one. So, there's a provision in, somewhere in the law, and I think it might have to do with environmental only, but it says, when you're board of health and you make that kind of a regulation, if it's not backed by science, you're gonna lose the first time a contractor comes along and challenges it. Years ago, in one of those communities where they had some of these most ridiculous regulations, I was at a party and talking to a contractor, and he was telling me about the ridiculous regulations in that town, and I said, I think he did that. And I started telling him why, and I said, well, this is not even backed by science, and that's just the contractor, and I went on and on and on. But you know, about six months later, that guy sued the board of health and won. And they had to, they had to throw that ordinance, uh, throw that regulation out, because it wasn't, it was just a made-up thing that they were trying to limit development in that little town. So, um, the corollary here is, is there something in municipal law that says when you create an ordinance, you can't create an ordinance for a special interest, in this case, the restaurants?
Mm-hmm, well.
Is that how that seems?
So there is a.
Or is it our duty, in fact, as a city, to protect our business interests?
So we can't, we can't really protect, I mean, so here's the thing, uh, what we can do is we can, we can make a, a, a common sense regulation that, that is not necessarily protective, but not, not gonna be harmful. To, you know, if we, if we allow a food truck to pull in, in front of a, a, then it's a brick and mortar, and that could be harmful, that could be a harmful regulation.
It's econo- it's economically harmful.
But the commerce clause does not allow us to protect specific industry just to protect them. Um, so, but we can have common sense regulations that, you know, are going to put a buffer between, um, just like we don't necessarily want seven liquor stores in a row. You know, we can create common sense, and that's not because we don't want them to, zoning.
Right.
Um, but, you know, with this, within the ordinance, we can make reasonable, um, guidelines that are going to, um, enhance the quality of life for the citizens of East Hampton. Um, not necessarily in the, trying to protect anything, but trying to make things, you know, running a little bit more smoothly.
Hence, the, want the parking space in front of the pond.
Right.
One designated space that will be made available. The, the parking on commercial lots, we're not touching. If, if, if somebody has a, a commercial site, and they want to bring in a food truck, and the food truck wants to have a relationship and arrangement with that property owner, non-commercial property, go ahead.
I, you used a term I liked, and something just came to me. What if you define in your ordinance, something called special designated sites? Which are, A, parking spots, spots, and are specifically designed, defined, like, for instance, there will be one special designated si- site at the, uh, pond. There will be one special designated site behind Mill one eighty or whatever. You know, and in, in certain places, like, there'll be one designated special spot on Main Street.
Right, and those are called, those are.
And you'd say, notwithstanding that a special event where there's a big fair or festival, you know, that, this does not apply.
Right.
Find a way to write that.
So that, that's what we, that's where we were, and, and we call them catch zones.
Okay, oh, I love that.
Um, and, you know, I think we're still there, we just haven't defined them yet. Um, and I, and I didn't know if, as we were looking at these, um, other regulations, you know, if we needed to do catch zones still.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that, that's something that, you know, we've talked about in the past, and I'm fine to keep on the table, but it would just mean that we would have to have a map attached to the ordinance that designated the catch zones. You know, so what we would do is probably identify three parking spaces behind Mill one eighty, and, uh, you know, a certain number of parking spaces behind the other mill buildings as, cause you never know, I mean, who knows what's gonna happen? I don't, I haven't heard anything about the dispensary, but if that comes in, and that is, um, you know, has a retail component, and there's, has a lot of bit traffic going in and out there, someone might wanna set up a food truck there, you know?
They, they've already joked about selling, um. Who joked about setting up? Yeah, like a little cookie shop right out, yeah, right outside the dispensary.
Yeah.
And I remember saying, oh my god.
Well, in Colorado, in Colorado, the, the Girl Scouts were sending out tables in front of the plate.
That's where I heard about, that's where I heard.
And they were making tons of money.
Yeah, yeah, that was very smart.
They made tons of money.
And, if maybe it was, I don't know, I think it was probably after that was on the news, that Julie Toolman and I talked about that when I was inspecting her kitchen. She's in the building where the dispensary's gonna be.
Oh, is that the new space, the new, um, uh, events place? The, at the Keystone Building?
She's in the, she's in the Sulco building.
Okay.
You know, Sulco is right next door to the.
One twenty-two.
Um, yeah, so, so you go in that door, she's not far from that door, but upstairs.
And it's.
And so, if you were gonna come to the dispensary through that door.
Yeah.
Which I don't.
I don't know, I think it's from the back, it's just from the back.
For the back, cause they didn't want people crossing the street and becoming.
Well, they're gonna have a commercial kitchen in there too, I think. I mean, if it happens, I don't even know if they've gotten approval.
Well, when we talked, we talked around the table, they came in and met with all the city departments. And I don't really have any authority over or interest in this particular operation. And it's all Department of Public Health, not local level that, that authorizes this. And, um, but then they said, they, then they started talking about maybe even making edibles with THC in it or something. And then I said, what, wait, wait a minute, edibles? Wait a minute.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you can't do that, then you're gonna need a kitchen, so you better talk to them about that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so, and a kitchen that they make has to be, you know.
Full-scale commercial kitchen, I imagine.
Well, I don't know, full-scale, depends on what they wanna make, but they have to submit a plan for me, me for approval, because if they're gonna make food, it's not approved.
Julie is, uh, what is, what kind of kitchen does she have though, over there? Is it?
She has a full-scale commercial kitchen to make popsicles.
Popsicles?
And she has a blast freezer, and she has a three-thin sink, and she has a beautiful commercial floor, and she's got stainless steel.
Oh, that's cool.
Workspaces and.
So, full-on popsicle.
Yeah.
Frozen dessert, be- frozen.
She's kinda insane, but she's creative. I, the last time I criticized somebody, he turned out to be a millionaire, so I stopped, I stopped saying that's a bad idea. I wanna go into the food, and that was Bart's Ice Cream.
Oh, Bart's, oh, yeah, they did well.
Yeah, he did really well, and I told him that years later, I said, you know, when you first opened that store in the middle of winter?
Yeah.
Selling ice cream, he drove by and I said, oh, you're stupid, daddy.
Was it Von Ducci's before it was Bart's?
Simply, that teacher.
So, yeah, catch zones are something that we've been talked about, I just didn't, I didn't put it into this draft, just because I didn't have a map. Um, but that's, I think you, you, and I was kind of like rushing through, so I didn't write it out, but that's, that's something that I, and it does make sense to keep that in there, I think, to designate those spaces. It makes it easier, at least.
I think it does, I mean, I didn't, I think then you have to look at first come, first served, or plan to sign up for the space.
Right.
What if, um, what if a car is just in there?
Yeah, yeah, what if it goes?
Sign would say designated, it, it would be an extra parking space, I would think, or an add-on, maybe an add-on parking space, where you say designated food trucks all the time.
Yeah, it would cost money though.
Fifty dollars for a sign?
Maybe, I don't know, every time we were doing stop signs for the police, like, or the DPW says we don't have money.
I'll get cranked over. But, you want, you wanna park it all over, all over the city?
I mean, and, but the thing is, is like, I, I just don't, I don't know, let's, let's, catch zones. I'll, I'll add it in, um, and we'll see, we'll see.
I think, I think that's really where you get your.
Yeah.
Practical setup of where people should be.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I agree with that. So, well, uh, and, and, and we, it would just, you know, it does.
And then you don't even have to have the two hundred feet, this is the catch zone, this is the parking space, you can park in a public parking lot or in the catch zone.
Yeah.
In the vision.
So we could, we could make this whole parking lot a catch zone, we made any municipal, except for, we probably, that one's too small. The one that's next to Whiskers.
It's a small parking lot.
That's too small.
That's a reasonable, I think that's maybe a reasonable way of.
Controlling, yeah. Um.
Because they're.
And then, the mill parking lots, we could just say, you know, we could ask Mike, hey, Mike, can we designate the first three spaces in front of, uh, New City as mobile food catch zone? And he'd probably be fine with that. Uh, you know, at least from what I think, I think he just wants to have a little bit of control, like, I don't, I don't think, and it hasn't gotten to this point, but I, I just don't think he wants it to be like, you know, a food truck Friday in front of New City where nobody can park now.
Right.
You know, New City does it right, they close off the entire half of the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
They clo- and so what they have is they have the food trucks making one boundary, and they have the whole thing taped in.
Oh, do they really?
They have a little entrance, and they use the entire half of the parking lot on their side.
I'm gonna go down and look at that. When did they do that?
Friday, uh, food truck, it's Friday, November fourth.
That's why I've never seen it, cause it's not a Friday.
Friday, November fourth. All right, so, any other things we wanna knock off this one?
I was hoping to see what the food code uses for a definition in the regulation of mobile food vendor. And interestingly, they got definitions for everything, vending machines.
But not mobile food?
Service animals, temporary food establishments, nothing for mobile food, they don't define. I never really noticed that before. They got a section on mobile food vendors, but they don't have a definition of one. But that's not a, uh, an accident, I bet they found it too complex.
Mm-hmm.
Well.
This is probably why all these major cities have like, really complex ordinances. That, like, spell out everything from, you know, like, where the, this, uh, where they get their food prepared, and, I mean, they go through all these really.
They don't have to do that, because that's already in the food code.
I don't know, I don't know.
Code al- already says, each of these operate, each of these mobile food vendors, by the way, has to have a base of operation that is a fixed kitchen.
Right.
That is permitted by a local board of health, or health department, and inspected.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, you can't just buy a food truck and go out and sell food.
Right, but so.
You have to have a place to prepare.
You have to have a place where you're storing your food.
Are you aware of where this is?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
For the various ones?
Absolutely, yeah.
Would you share that with us?
Oh, sure.
Where they're located?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I don't think any are East Hampton-based, though.
I don't think any are East Hampton-based, are they?
Cause I feel like most, like, um, Mothership might be Northampton.
Because we would like them to be East Hampton-based.
Oh, that would be great, yeah.
That would be wonderful.
Here's how they work, some of them like, um.
Well, the popsicles are East Hampton-based.
Yeah, she's the only one, but she's, uh, she's not a mobile food vendor, remember?
Right.
Um, the cat, not Casa Latina, um.
I know what you're talking about.
The Mexican guy.
Uh, yes, uh, from Amherst.
Yeah, now he's out of Amherst because he owns the restaurant.
Yes, Mission Cantina.
Mission Cantina, so sometimes you get restaurant owners that also buy mobile food vendors.
Right, and they use their restaurant.
Rips is another one, Myers E. Green.
Lot Cabin.
And the Lot Cabin is a third, but the others, what they do is, they buy a mobile food unit, maybe they used to work in a kitchen, now they wanna be a mobile food vendor, and they don't own a restaurant, so they go to a restaurant, or to the American Legion, or to a church kitchen, or something like that, and they say, I wanna rent your space.
Mm-hmm.
And they store their refrigerated food in their kitchen, they wash their dishes in their three-thin sink, they, they use their facility. Uh, I'm sure I can make a list of those for you. You want me to sign you a list?
Sure.
Somebody?
Yeah.
Who do I send it to and where?
Has a list of all the kitchens in East Hampton?
Well, yeah, JP.
All the kitchens?
JP in East Hampton.
Somewhere on this.
JP?
At East Hampton.
Oh, Constable, yeah, um, that.
Didn't fit with the.
It was, that was one of the original words, that was in there that we just never took out.
Here it is, yeah, that would be my one, I, I think.
No, no, I'll make it.
Where, where? When it's demanded by some people, that can take it away, I think it goes with people that should be demanded.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so like, the mayor can take away, but the mayor can't demand it.
If, if it's in East.
Right.
Unless it costs.
I don't even know if we have a constable in it.
Tax?
The meals tax.
Oh, it would be in the city that they were.
That's a good question, I don't know how that part works at all, I don't.
It's, it's where, yeah.
My understanding.
Yeah, yeah, not where they sell it.
That does make sense.
Yeah.
Cause I gotta keep track of how many hot dogs you sold, holy old versus chicken be versus.
You do.
Yeah.
Kinda makes sense, but we, if you're coming here to fall this business, and then there's no meals tax.
Yeah, so I, that's a really good question.
Yeah.
Like, so if the fellow lives in Southampton, but he's really using, uh, Rips Kitchen in East Hampton.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Who's he paying the meals tax?
Well, the meals tax goes to the Department of Revenue, the meals tax goes to the Department of Revenue, but it's assigned, I believe it's assigned to where the food is prepared.
Yeah, so, so for example, so you say Mission Cantina is being prepared in Amherst.
Back to us?
Nothing, I don't think they're getting anything.
If it's prepared in South, in, in, in Amherst, it goes to Amherst.
Yeah.
Well, wait, you just said it went to the DOR.
It goes to the Department of Revenue, who then sends it, I believe, to the community, back to Amherst.
So, that's one of the problems with food trucks, is that.
Wholesale tax, but the portion, the meals, the extra meals tax that we all pay.
Got it, comes back to the community, I did not want.
Yeah, so, that's one of the bummers, and, you know, and we, we do say that, uh, you know, we have in here, it's a statement pursuant to general laws, chapter sixty-two C, forty-nine A, signed under the pains and penalties of perjury, that the applicant will be responsible for and pay all applicable taxes for all goods sold. But, I mean, that's one of the things I had asked Barbara about taxes. You know, if, really, it makes sense for the local community where the food is sold, for that tax to go back to that, where the food is sold. But I feel like that might be burdensome on the, the food truck operator. I don't know.
I think it would be burdensome, but.
But it seems right.
My way of viewing the world, world is this, yeah, it's burdensome, so they just wouldn't do it.
Right.
Or they'd lie, and who's gonna catch them?
Yeah, no.
Who's got time to chase that around?
And it's not a lot of money.
We don't know.
Well, if the.
If it's ice cream.
Percentage is going to the slate anyway.
Right.
Is a significant percentage.
Yeah. Well, it'd be interesting, that's, I mean, that's another thing that we can kind of investigate. I don't know exactly how we would figure it out.
Well, if you were saying they're making five hundred dollars a day, they have to have sa- are you thinking sales or profit of five hundred dollars a day?
Well, probably profit, I'm thinking.
Profit is, cause I don't know what they're.
You're thinking profit, you're thinking profit per day, so the sales have to be probably five times that or more.
But Jim, I have to do is go to the park when they're having the Scottish festival.
Yeah.
I, I stand there and I look at those four food trucks. It's the same four or five food trucks every year. I go into that festival all the time. And I stand there and I just start running the numbers.
Yeah.
I, I do, cause you're standing in line forever. So I look at the menu, I'm like, this is eight ninety-five, that's seven ninety-five, so does four ninety-five.
Count the people, you count how many, yeah, and the number of.
And I go, and I count the people, and I go, see, this has been a half an hour. Yeah, I play that little game of mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, think about it.
When you had a big festival.
So it's hundreds and hundreds of dollars of tax every day.
Yeah, so you think, you think it's like a, probably a food truck could.
I don't know any food trucks.
To the state and it could be a hundred dollars.
I don't know, I have never seen a food truck with a cash register, never.
Well, they, I, I've seen the cash register.
You, you see a cash drawer. I have never inspected a food, uh, food truck that had a cash register in it or any electronic means of.
Well, all of them.
You hand your money to the guy, he does something, he hands you the change.
Oh, that's not right.
You gotta figure out, at least half of that goes somewhere that the government never sees.
That's not right.
I think, I think.
It's a cash business, that's why it's lucrative.
Well, now they have, now they, now they have like iPads and now they take credit cards.
Okay.
So that, that changes things a little bit, so it's interesting. But, I mean, so anyway, we have a draft. I, I feel like we have some good information to go on, um. So I think what we'll do is we'll just, you know, I'll make some of these changes, we'll come back and we'll take.
I think it's a draft a little bit in the next couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll take a look at this draft and, and start like, you know, working off of it. At least we have something to work off of now. Um, so, and then we'll, we'll go from there. And I don't know, did you have anything on plastic bags?
Yes.
Okay. What have we got?
So you're done with them?
We're done, thank you.
Unless you're interested in plastic bags.
I tell you I am, but I don't know.
So feel free to say, we always enjoy your.
Stay for twenty-five, thirty seconds maybe.
Enjoy your input.
Listen, just see what kind of words to say, on plastic bags.
Okay, so we had talked about, um, doing the survey this week, but before, um, before even went to the survey, there were a couple of other things that I really thought that we needed to get some more clarification on. So at the top, when we first started looking at this, I had created kind of a spectrum of choices that we had, ranging from no ban at all to banning all plastic bags and all businesses, um, and what were the other things that could go on. Last meeting, we had talked about the possibility of having a charge per bag
Mm-hmm.
and, um, what it would take to, to implement that. And I wanted to talk about some of the best practices that other cities have used and things that I think we should consider. And I think this also really addresses the feedback that we got in our forums. So first one, um, because the environment tends to be a social class issue where, um, you'll see people with higher degrees of income and higher degrees of education pushing a lot more for these types of laws. I think it would be, uh, hooless to have some protections in there. So I wanted to bring up the possibility of if someone is in the store using food stamps or using WIC or any other public assistance, that they would be exempt from the bag fee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the same thing with senior citizens, um, there's two possibilities, just because the any, I remember when we brought up the whole override possibility in East Hampton and that was the biggest pushback, was that we have vulnerable groups in East Hampton and how will they deal with that? Um, we haven't really talked about store size or quantity of the product that they're selling restrictions, whether or not we would wanna put any sort of restrictions with that. A lot of the other cities avoided the whole restaurant issues and plastic bags for takeout food by just exempting them from the whole ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And because it was the restaurant industry, that was the only, um, the, the loudest voice in that about concern. I figured if we put that in as an exemption, it'd kind of take care of that issue. But it.
Or you word it in such a way that would say, uh, retail stores.
Right, but then.
Which restaurants aren't retail stores.
But if you look at a place like, um, Orchard Hill, they have some things that they sell that are prepared foods and then they have some things that would be like cookbooks or, or little folk crafts. They have nothing to do with that. So I think if it was a mixed use where it was a restaurant that sold other goods, we would have to consider whether or not we would wanna make it for, well, since you sell food period and, and your first designation is as a restaurant, you're exempt. Or would we say if it's a non-food item, they have to do that? That's just a decision we would need to make.
Well, if you look at the convenience stores, they sell food and butter either.
That's different, though. That's a real estate, that, that's different in terms of the, um, prepared-to-go foods versus foods for sale that you'd find at a convenience store. Maybe if they had like, you know how, I, I don't know if they have this in East Hampton.
What's a grocery?
But yeah, okay, so like Seven-Eleven has suddenly like all these food products that they're making on site. That would not be, they, they couldn't put that in plastic to go if it was something like that.
So food prepared.
But if you went in to buy batteries, they couldn't put it in plastic?
Right.
That's confusing for a consumer.
Right, which is why I'm bringing it up.
Right, so we can just, just kind of think about that.
Mm-hmm.
Food prepared on site versus.
Food not prepared on site. If you have food prepared on site, would that.
Prepackaged, prepackaged products.
Or would we wanna just say that's just for restaurants and not for retail?
Well, certainly, I think we all tend to agree that if there wasn't some sort of restriction on plastic bags, that they'd be limited to, limited, I mean, not to be not ex, not inclusive of restaurants. We do not include restaurants.
So how would that go for a store that's really a store, but suddenly is something what they're providing?
I think, I think, uh, we, we should look at primary, um, primary purpose.
Whose primary business is a restaurant?
Yeah, so, you know, for like Amy's Place, exempt. Seven-Eleven, not exempt.
What did they do in Northampton?
Banned all plastic, single-use bags.
No matter what you were, who you were?
Across the board. So, um, so they had to switch the paper, which.
Which sucks, by the way.
Yeah, we know, that's why we're not looking to ban.
So that, that really makes me remember to bring in those big plastic handlebags on my truck and not forget them.
Which is the, which is kind of the point. Right, which was the point.
Which is, it works, it works. It's over time, it's worked better, better for you.
But, um, but, you know, we also have heard a lot of feedback that, you know, some people do really rely on these things, so you know, we're trying to find ways to incentivize bringing up those big bags in.
Well, you know what incentivized me as a consumer? The fact that they were big, roomy, handled, well-made, durable, plastic bags. How durable? I use them at home for my recyclables, like the cans, and they get yucked up. I throw them in a washer and they, you can wash them.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So they're that durable for a dollar.
Right, I know, it's cheap.
That's what, I have about twenty of them in my truck.
Yeah, we, we were actually, one of the things we were talking about was partnering with E C A. E C A Plus to have East Hampton themed bags made that could be sold at different retailers. So, that were made by artists in East Hampton. So that's one of the things that's on our.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, kind of like Bear Fest, bubba bags.
I found.
I'm gonna go.
Okay.
Thinking of that.
Thanks for letting me speak up when I do have any right to.
That's fine.
I'm gonna go.
Plenty of right, thanks for sharing.
So you can really do your work.
Take care, thank you.
Thanks for inviting me, and I appreciate having some input.
Yeah.
So in Seattle, in, in retail establishments, the city created these stickers, like a bumper sticker,
Uh-huh.
um, where it has the city logo in the corner and then here's our plastic bag ban and just a reminder on city doors. So I think having that competition with that kind of signage would be really.
This is what I wrote before.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, like, I, I agree. I think the sign should, we should have a sign that the city creates that is, that is mandated to be posted at all the stores that give out plastic bags.
Another thing that they did was they had, this is, sorry, I don't have this printed, but this was just like, here's the law and it was a front and back page.
Like a flyer, yeah.
And I was thinking, you know, if we, if we could raise the fund for it, it would be great to be able to put that into the, um, summit.
Mm-hmm.
And so people were actually getting notification of this. So combination of the summit newspaper and then on the doors of businesses within East Hampton that, you know, this is, this is.
That's cool, that's really cool. I mean, if we had, you know, and I think that Seattle must have a, um, waste management.
Mm-hmm. And I think this really calls for that committee as well.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I agree.
So while we're talking about the committee, just for a moment, may I say we've all talked about this for a very long time and we're getting, I know I'm getting more knowledgeable on the subject. I think we're sharing ideas. I think we're pretty much headed in the same direction. There are three people in this day, well, there were four who came to the meeting, two or three were opposed and a number were in favor. I still think we don't have that critical mass to move forward that we all talked about before. I mean, we brought that up. Do we need to really have a critical mass in the group? And I, it almost seems to me like, I don't wanna wait for the group, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna move forward prematurely to have everything kind of not be successful because we haven't, we, we, we don't have the buy-in from everyone. So my, what I'm gonna bring out and put on the table is the idea that we talked about before about the sign on the door, the sign at the point of sale. Remember, we talked about, we should have a sign, East Hampton, strongly encourages the use of reusable, uh, cloth bags, reusable, uh, compostable bags, whatever we wanna say. To say, East Hampton is, as a city, is behind this and this is our first salvo, our first step toward awakening the public to this idea in general. Set up the groups that will coordinate how we perceive. But I don't want, I wanna put those signs up and have everybody say, like, on, on the doors that say, did you bring your plastic bag today? I'm sorry, did you bring your, your, your clean cloth bags or your clean, whatever we, however we wanna word it, so that everyone starts thinking about every time they approach a point of sale where plastic bags are used, that they're thinking about it.
Okay, go ahead.
And I, and I, I'm thinking maybe just before that, we should have a survey to tell us how many people are using the, the single-use bags so that we can tell whether or not the first step.
The businesses or the citizens?
How much, how many, how many bags are we, are, are getting distributed and thrown out into the world to landfills, to wherever they go, uh, that we wanna reduce, so that we can say, geez, yeah, right now, our sense is that there are a hundred thousand plastic bags a year in the state, two hundred thousand. And if we can reduce that amount, that's our goal, I think, by having people think about sustainability of how we utilize our resources.
I think, yeah, I agree.
What do you guys?
I agree with that. I think that when it comes to survey research, it, the norm is to have a real low, um, response rate. So to be able to put a number as to how many bags we're actually doing in East Hampton, I don't know that it can be a mailed survey or an email survey.
I'm not thinking of mails, I'm thinking you go out and you, you know, randomly sample the stores that you're thinking are using.
I don't know if we have enough, I honestly don't know if we have enough of retail store base to make that statistically significant as a, as a random sample. I don't know if we'll be able to do that.
Maybe it's not all that important. I just, it would be nice at the end to say, geez, this has reduced, East Hampton has reduced the use of single-use plastic bags by fifty percent.
Mm-hmm. So we can.
And this is what we did and how we did it. Now, if we wanna go from fifty percent reduction to eighty percent reduction or seventy percent, without imposing a ban, we think we need these steps, then we'd know what our goals are and what our current usage is.
Okay, so, so let me just get, um, so you're, what you're suggesting is an ordinance that would, um, mandate posting of a sign.
Of a message to the public. And they would remind people, oh, jeez, I forgot my bag in the car, let me go back.
In all retail facilities?
Mm-hmm.
Before I get into the store, get my stuff and I say, oh, shoot, I forgot my bag.
So where would we want it? And so, and so, I mean, it would.
I'm, I'm thinking at the point of entry would be the most logical place.
So we'd have to mandate that it would be placed at the point of entry. And so the ordinance would say, state, uh, all retail, all retail establishments in the city of East Hampton that, uh, use single-use three, point-three-mill plastic bags are required to post the following message on their point of entry. Boom. Point message. Uh, the city of East Hampton encourages, uh, all patrons to use recyclable bags.
Something, it should, in a really short, I mean, if we think about it, we think of a short state.
So, and so who, who do we, who pays for the sign? Do we pay for it? Does the city, I mean?
Practical problem, I don't, I don't, they'd be expensive, they'd be small, they'd be like little stickers that are probably gonna cost a hundred bucks or something. I don't, I don't think, I'm thinking little stickers, right, that you could put on. If he's attractive, they might. But I don't think it'd be.
Similar to that sticker that you had, I mean.
Kind of, kind of like a, a, a logo we're gonna be working with maybe later.
See, I feel, I mean, I'm fi- I'm fine with that, but I feel like, you know, if we're gonna write an ordinance for this, I feel like writing an ordinance for a store to put a sticker on the door doesn't necessarily have the impact. Like, I'm almost like.
I, I agree with you.
I'm almost like, there's stores probably have a sticker that says that anyway. A lot of them probably do.
I've never seen one.
Feel like I have, but I could have imagined it.
So a lot of other cities do that as like a three-phase implementation process where the first year, there's no penalty for not doing it, but there's a public, um, just information, awareness and a campaign to really do that. And I think we could say our first step is going to be a campaign and to do this campaign, we've, um, created a committee, we've created a contest for a logo and we've met with the mayor and the E C A Plus person and whoever else needs to do that, that needs to be on that. And then we had talked about, um, Earth Day being the day that we start implementing more than what we would, you know, so up until that day, it would be more of a, okay, guys, this is gonna be happening, so here's what we should be looking for. And then after that, we could have, okay, now we're really getting serious. If you still are not bringing your bags on your own, even though we're giving all this extra stuff, now the next incentive is that the bags will still be available, but you'll have to pay a fee for them. Um, and then we could even phase it out that next year on Earth Day, we won't allow those plastic bags at all.
There may be, there may be a ban, right.
And so if we were to write the ordinance out that way, that had those stalled steps into it, that would allow, if people wanted to get more involved in it, they could apply to join the committee. And if people were, all of the other complaints that we've gotten have really been kind of focused on, we're not demanding only one type of bag, because we've heard from different people and the research shows that there's pros and cons to all of them. We're, we're putting protections in for vulnerable people within East Hampton. We're giving the businesses a pretty long timeline to be able to comply and we're also creating a funding stream in the long run to keep this sustainable over time.
In phase, phase two, ph- phase three.
Or, yeah, phase two would be the money, um, that would be generated and then phase three would be, okay, now you're not allowed to have any plastic bags. And at that time.
Because we don't seem to be reducing, uh, the use of, of the single-use bag.
Or, but, but then the state will probably have already banned them.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, so here's what I was thinking. I, I like, I like this, I like the pronged approach, approach. But, and, but I feel like the sign and the recycling bins could go hand in hand.
Okay.
Like, I don't see why, I don't see why the, you know, saying, hey, listen, you're, you give out these single-use plastic bags, now you have to have a place for people to bring them back and, you, you know, um, and you, now you have to put up with a sign to try and encourage people to bring their own. Like, I feel like that could be phase one and phase two could be like, now it's a ten cent fee for each bag that's collected and we still haven't decided where that money goes yet, though. You know, does it go to the business owner to offset the cost of, you know, recycling?
I, I've seen many of the communities that split, split.
Split it.
Five, five cents to the business and five cents to some other purpose related to the product.
Like a, 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 a donation account for, you know, that is specifically, uh, for recycling efforts and, uh, and making signs and stuff in East Hampton, right? Like, that could be.
It could also be to help, um, new businesses or financially failing businesses to help to pray those costs so that five cents that we get, I mean, we could.
Yeah, so that's something that, you know, that we could, alright, I'm, I mean, I think this is, I think we're at a good place here. So maybe we should start looking at verbiage.
Yes. Let me get through a couple more things first. The guy who came in, who has a farmer's market down the road saying that he needs those bags.
Yeah.
I was thinking about, of the other farmers markets that I see in town, Peppin Farm, Haver's Farm, they all use used bags. It looks like those families probably saved those bags up all year, so I'm not so concerned about that, that one retailer.
That's a reuse. And plus that's seasonal and it's not like large scale.
Right.
You know, it's not like C V S giving, you buy a pack of gum and you get a.
Right. So, um, I think we should consider food vending struck, I put the food vending trucks in case we decided that the bags for prepared food would not be exempt from that, that, well, then does that mean the food trucks wouldn't? So I guess that's a non-issue for just kind of exempt the restaurants.
Yeah.
Um, should any types of businesses be exempt from the ordinance? And I was thinking like the East Hampton Community Center, Parsons Closet, Cancer Connection, we have at least those three, three entities within East Hampton that are, I don't know if any money should be handed at the East Hampton Community Center.
Well, I was gonna say, but the, I, I have a feeling they're probably not. Are they buying single-use plastic bags to give their stuff out?
East Hampton Community Center? I don't think so, but I was thinking we could encourage businesses to donate their bags
Donate their bags to them.
to these businesses that are relying on the public.
Yeah, so that, I mean, I think that could be a pretty easy, especially if we're requiring people to have recycling.
The, the community center, I think, would be exempt in any case because it's not a point of sale.
Right, right. I just wasn't sure if they were or not.
If Parsons Closet is a point of sale, I don't know what their square footage is.
I guess it's just because they're.
That may be one way to begin, you could look at the square footage and say, geez, they're two fifty, okay, they're listed, or.
But I guess for Parsons Closet.
Because I don't think they're using, I don't think there are a lot of sales there.
But the, the whole purpose of Parsons Closet is for people who can't afford.
Can't afford it, right.
So I think that's what I was going, like the Cancer Connection, a hundred percent of their profits are going to, uh, there's gotta be some business designation for that type of business.
So you could call and say nonprofits, but then I'm not sure.
Nonprofit.
I wouldn't say all nonprofits.
No.
I, I, I wouldn't either. I would have to think about that again.
But what other nonprofits are point of sale?
What other nonprofits are point of sale that would use bags?
Girl Scouts.
See, I don't like, I don't think, I, it'd be hard pressed to think of one.
If they open up something unpleasant, the Girl Scouts said I'm, I'm sorry, they use plastic.
No plastic bags, Girl Scouts. I don't know, they're just gonna be taken straight to the box. The box is getting straight open, they don't want a bag.
Um.
I, I agree that those, I agree that those businesses should be exempt, so.
Okay. I just think that comes back to your other question too, J P, about how are we responding to the public and providing their input? And I think if we, all of those things are addressing all of the issues that the public brought forth.
Mm-hmm.
So the only thing that we really, that I'm not seeing is more of a, I think we need to have one meeting with Mo. So, the only thing that we really, that I'm not seeing is more of a, I think we need to have one meeting with Mo.
Yeah.
Because we don't have the input from the business community yet. And that was the other part, I'm, the questions that I have for the, the survey, really, we're more asking, would you support this or not? And I thought, why are we asking them? If we're gonna be doing this anyway, I don't know that I wanna be giving them the false impression that we're gonna make our decision on this, whether or not they like it.
Yeah. Right.
So I didn't wanna put those questions into a survey per se, but I did wanna give an opportunity for feedback. So, what a lot of communities have done is when, you know, like a six-month-out or a one-year-out survey to ask how significant the change has been as a result of it. All right, so, and then the other question that I had was, I just, and this, I think, is the part where the committee would be really helpful. I'm just not sure how to find out who all the local suppliers are, and that, I guess, would be the one thing for bags. Like, if businesses, it, it's often said that businesses don't, cities don't move forward on this because the businesses say they don't have the time to do the research about cost comparisons. And so one really helpful thing is when the city holds a number of, of forums where they invite different local vendors in to show them the products and to have that comparison there.
Are you talking about plastic bags?
Yeah. And maybe that's not necessary.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure you're gonna get there, I'm not sure it's necessary. I did a search since our last meeting on plastic bags and where they're sold.
Yeah.
There are places in Massachusetts, plastic bags, and Hudson Gas is a major manufacturer.
Okay.
Uh, I didn't identify anyone in our community, I don't think there is anyone, I don't think there is anyone in our county that manufactures plastic bags. There are a lot of people who manufacture plastic products, a lot of plastic products, which is a whole nother, another set and it's another issue, but let's stick to the plastic bags. I don't think we have anybody local. In terms of finding out what the costs are, usually the sites had call us for a quote, really what they.
How much, it's probably based on volume.
Um, based on volume and will give you a quote, so I wasn't quite sure how to proceed.
It would be interesting, you know, I bet you, I bet you.
To invite them in here, I think would be kind of a, I think.
That's, that's, no, that's fine.
I bet that a lot of places have that information, you know, how much they've paid.
But, but, the, the businesses would.
How many, how many they've worked.
Maybe we can reach out informally, over the next couple of weeks to find out.
But then, you know, I mean.
Although it is election coming up, so there may be a lot of demands out, people still.
Yeah.
But you know it, but. There may be other activities, you know, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so in terms of actually panning out ordinance, I've never done that, um, so I'm not even sure where I would start. And I would be happy to, to try my hand at that, but I don't know if you usually follow a template?
Hmm.
Or if you.
It depends on what the ordinance is, uh, yeah, you, like, you know, generally what I try to do is I try to find something that's already in existence.
Okay.
And then, and then find, you know, like, find one that meets, is closer to meeting our needs and then start tweaking that and make it. You know, for this, I took what was in there, what was in our ordinance and just started tweaking it.
Okay.
Um, you know, I think maybe North Hamptons would be a place to start, you know, and look at, and then you just like to get their verbiage.
Yeah.
And then, instead of like looking at a ban, saying, you know, if there, it's a point, what is it, a point-three millimeter plastic bag would, um, require businesses to, um, provide a receptacle for the deposit, um, for recycling of on-premises.
Maybe those have to be recycled properly.
And then they have to be recycled properly, or donated to, uh, you know, uh, like the community center or something, you know.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, just take a stab at it and then we can, we can wordsmith it, uh, as we go and, and try to find something.
So we'd be, uh, talking about an ordinance for phase one?
I would say phase one should be, uh, some sort of mandated signage and, and the, um, receptacle for, for deposit.
And then there can be a larger discussion in the community.
Yeah, 'cause that'll start something.
The people who wanna be in the group.
Yeah.
Right.
That'll, that'll at least get people talking and then we'll be like, well, phase two is, you know, each bag is gonna cost a certain amount of money.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and this is what we would use that money for, and these are the people that would be exempted. So we, we'll, and we'll work on that language as well.
Okay.
And, um, you know, we'll go from there. All right, all right, well, that's productive, we've been here for an hour forty-five minutes, so, um, let's, uh, don't have a motion.
Did you draw your own?
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, seven forty-three.